Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Are you ready to begin that work business?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. It is now 6:00 P.M. And I call this meeting of the Fairmont County School District to order that the records show that a quorum of board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand. Please bow and pray.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all our blessings and answered prayers today. We pray that you continue to be with us as we make decisions that affect our district and community. Make us wise where we cannot see clearly, make us brave where we feel afraid, and make us faithful in the face of the impossible. Please keep our students and staff safe this new school year. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God.
The motion is to approve the minutes of July 24th of 2023 and August 4th, 2023.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 24th, 2023, and August 4th, 2023.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Ms. Johnson, and a second by Mrs. Montalvo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I believe the next item is celebrations.
Yes, Madam President. Tonight, we're excited to announce that we received our first rating, our financial rating. And last year, we did get an A. And so this is the fourth year in a row. And actually, this year, we got a 94, which was from last year's information. And so, Mr. Cabasos, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So this is the 21st year of the first ratings in the state of Texas. And, you know, over the past four years, LaBea's gotten a score of an A. This year, we went up two points, a 94, you know, compared to 92 last year. Now, you know, in the previous years, I think it was rated superior or above standard. We have been superior most of the years here. And again, it's a 94 this year. And this is based out of the 2022-2023 fiscal data. So, you know, just want to give kudos to the business staff and Alex, you know, and assess better than this year before. This is because of them, they got, you know, this award.
So Maggie could not be here today. She is out ill. And then we did invite Alex to come, but they must be working and playing, so he isn't able to join us. But I would ask the business office and the board to come up, and we'll take a picture and present, yes.
Before we do that, I know at last year's celebration, I did ask Mr. Cepeda, is there any way we can approve? So I know he had that, if he knows an A, I'm always about, let's do better. And you all did, you know, two points, I know is quite a bit, especially when you're already up there. So, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication.
So if y'all will come up? And Mr. Cabasos, you'll join us even though you are just joining. Wait a second, don't move. We're gonna take a picture on this time. How far are you coming? We're celebrating the A for our financial rating. So right here. Okay.
Bigger smile. One, two, three.
Good job. Good job.
No, not mine. Looking, still looking, he's the same height as me.
Yes.
Celebration stuff, celebration is always fun, right guys?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. For the next item, I'm going to call item 7A, Discussion and Consideration to Approve Property and Casualty Insurance for the 23-24 school year, to discuss at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, board members, and Ms. Torres. Agenda 7A, Discussion and Consideration to Approve the Property and Casualty Insurance for the 23-24 school year. Finance Committee met and reviewed the proposals from Health International. Josh Fields was here to present and discuss the proposal. Where the 23-24 school year, our premium went up to $831,735. That's an increase of $287,123. We kept the same loss limit, $25 million. Were able to ensure about $10 million more in values. Our Winston deductible went up from 3% to 5%. And the win and held deductible went up from $100,000 to $250,000. Mr. Phil explained that this year was a difficult year to obtain property insurance, and the most district did see a sizable increase from the previous year. We did call several school districts in the area, and they did have a significant increase. Mr. Phil is here, present, in case the board members might have any questions, that we do recommend approval on this agenda item.
Yeah, any questions, Mr. Cabasos?
I have no questions. I'd just like to make a motion to approve this. I think, you know, I was part of that meeting, and I think we're getting the best deal. There's just no way we could do any better. And I appreciate the information that you brought, you know, the agency brought to us. And I feel very comfortable making a motion to approve.
Do I have a motion by Ms. Cabasos? Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Montalvo. It's been moved, the second, the property and casualty insurance for the 23-24 school year. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cabasos. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a day, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. The first information item is Discussion of Superintendent Performance Goal 1, Activity 5, Dual Enrollment.
Thank you, Madam President. So there are two separate performance goals. The first one that I want to discuss is Goal 1, Activity 5, which is dual enrollment. I did add some additional information. As you know, when we became an early college, we are expanding our dual enrollment opportunities at the high school. But we also feel, or I feel, it's very important to have a balance. And so I think it's important that we continue with our AP program, because there are times that a student might benefit better from taking an AP class in a dual enrollment. If they're a math major, often universities will not accept dual enrollment math transfers, but they might accept an AP exam. So there are different times. So if you notice on this, we are adding one AP course for this school year, which is AP pre-calculus that we did not have last year. And then for dual enrollment, from the 23 school year to this year, we're adding an additional five classes. Many of the classes, we talked about it earlier with a few board members that were here, and we discussed that, what is the difference between now that we're in early college and when we were still offering dual enrollment? We've been offering dual enrollment, I think you said it earlier, Mrs. Cassis, dual enrollment has been around since 1960 something. So it's been around for a long time. But the advantage of becoming an early college and partnering with TSC is they send adjunct professors to us, and we do not have the staff member that has that degree that can teach it. And so instead of sending our students to TSTC or sending it away, they'll send and support us in that way. So this slide basically lets you know that we continue with our pre-AP, we continue expanding our AP, and then we continue to support that dual enrollment, dual enrollment classes for early college. And again, out of a class of 250 students, you may only have 2025 that get an associate's degree, but many students are going to get 20, 30 hours, 15 hours, just depending upon the student. We also talked earlier about the need to push TSI, because they cannot take, they can take speech and music appreciation their freshman year without passing TSI. But they need to be able to pass that TSI to be able to take any other dual enrollment classes. So that is a push. We have some eighth graders that can do it, but some of them don't have that foundation of the advanced math, algebra two, geometry, things like that. So they take it, the big, the big push is their freshman year. So by the time they're sophomores, juniors, and seniors, they can be taking the classes. So remember to be, we have two programs with our early college. We have the court complete, which is not an associate's, it's just getting 45 hours of court classes. And then we have the one degree of an associate's of general education. But again, many students don't get any type of degree, but they can still take those. So that's just a little bit of where we are this year with dual enrollment and AP. Any questions?
Well, I have a question, I just have a comment. I want to thank Ms. Torres for educating me, because this was so renewed to me, I'll be honest. And I, I've learned a lot, and I appreciate you taking the time to explain. I didn't know what TSI was. I heard it this year and there, but I really didn't know the significance as related to the early college.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and so I appreciate that, that your, your goal, that, you know, get kids TSI, I guess they approved, and so they can have the four years to take as many college hours as they can, to totally take advantage of this new initiative that we have. And I think it's important that, that we, through parental engagement, that we communicate this to the parents, so the parents can know how much money they can save.
Yes, ma'am.
By their children taking the court classes. So I appreciate the time you spend educating me in this.
So the next time that we review this Goal 1, Activity 5, we'll talk more about certifications at that time. And so that particular goal talks about all of those things. So we'll discuss that.
Okay, I guess the next item is, next information item, is Discussion of Superintendent Performance Goal 3, excuse me, Performance Goal 2, Activity 5, Safety Needs.
So this particular goal asked me as a superintendent to come up with a facility needs assessment, a capital improvement plan. Basically, what projects do we need to get done? Last, at the last meeting, we talked about a facility update, and you saw the things that we did over the summer. So we did a lot to our facilities over the summer. But between now and December, the main focus that we will, we will focus on are the safety needs. The state did come up with a checklist that was released that states all of these things must be in compliance. And so for the next five, six months, these are the things that we're going to be working on to ensure that everything is, is completed. In closed session, I won't discuss the specifics out here because of the security aspect, but in closed session, we do have that item on the list. And I'll talk to the board a little bit more specifically about some of the things that we will be doing. So I just gave you a list of those requirements from TEA. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you, Mrs. Torres. And the next information item is Update on School Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Steel, Ms. Torres, board members. The Finance Committee met and discussed several items. We went over the new property tax legislation impact on homeowners, and you can see that spreadsheet up there. And there's three different scenarios here on, you know, estimated home values with individuals with home state exemption. So for example, I'll go with these pretty quick. A home value, taxable value, last year, 22-23, it was valued at $75,000. Last year, they had a home state exemption of $40,000. So the net taxable value was $35,000. Last year, our tax rate was $1,12.9489. So the school district's taxes paid by that individual was $395.32. In this year, 23-24, the same home taxable value is $75,000. In all likelihood, the home state exemption is gonna pass in November, right? I mean, that's when it's gonna go to the, to the voters. So that value, that home valued $75,000, their taxable value is now gonna be a negative 25, so it's gonna be zero, right? So there's no, no tax is gonna be due on that particular home. Our tax rate is 95, you know, we're gonna be closing to 95.8338, 0.95883, a tax rate. So that particular homeowner is gonna realize the savings of $395.32. Again, we're not looking at any increases in property value due to the appraisal districts and evaluation. This is just basically a $75,000 home last year compared to a $75,000 home this year. The next, you know, column, there's, you know, $125,000 home, and home state exemption of $40,000. The net taxable value for that home in 22-23 was $85,000. Our tax rate, again, last year was $1,12.9. That school district taxes owed by that individual is $960.07. This year, you know, the same scenario, $125,000 with a new home state exemption of $100,000, their taxable value is gonna be $25,000. Our tax, proposed tax rate's gonna be, you know, 0.95883. So the school district taxes that are due by that homeowner is $239.71. So that homeowner will realize the savings of $720.36. The next scenario there is a little bit, you know, Spencer Home of $200,000. Same scenario, the $40,000 home state exemption and the $100,000 home state exemption. The net difference there by that homeowner, their savings is gonna be $848.35. We just wanted to illustrate the committee and the board members, the impact of the new tax legislation that the governor passed, you know, he just signed the second special session here just a couple weeks ago, and the reduction of taxes due to compression. Any question on that particular?
But this is based on last year, correct? Sure, the $800, I know it, you're, know it, the bond is not taken into account or consideration?
Any, any increase in value, right?
So it could be less savings, or no?
It depends. If their, their home value went up, then there'll be a little bit less savings, because their base value went up, so there's more taxable value.
Right.
And in all likelihood, you know, most of the individuals, they get an increase in taxable value this year.
But they can only go up 10% as far as for taxes.
Yeah, 10% is a cap, you know, every year. So your value could have gone up 30%, but for tax purposes, they cap it at 10% until you get to that 30% over two years.
Right, right. It's a gradual increase.
It is, it's a gradual increase. But yeah, it's still be an increase every year, you know, because of the new evaluations that the appraisal district did this year. But we just wanted to inform the board and the committee on the potential savings for individual homeowners. Again, these are individuals with home state exemption, you know, in our school district.
And we will be having, this is coming to the board in September, and so we will be having a town hall meeting before then, before the next board meeting when we approve it. And at that time, the Cameron County Appraiser District will be here, and he'll be here to answer any questions. He said that he will be here at that time, so we'll be able to answer any community questions that they have about this.
Okay, I know I'm asking, okay, this is about the individual homeowner. And I guess I'm thinking about, how does that now equate to the school district in regarding collecting tax dollars? Or we don't have that info yet?
So anytime there's state legislation on compression or increase in home state, you know, what, what happens there is, you know, we get less in property tax revenues.
Right.
But the state subsidizes that in state revenues.
Okay.
So it's a revenue neutral, you know, effect for the school districts. Because the state is, you know, is mandating us to reduce our tax rate, so we should, you know, they would subsidize that reduction in property tax revenues.
Okay.
Good question. So this next slide is really, you know, to your point, what happens with, with our state values and compression. And so this has been our property tax rate over the past six years. And you can see the total there, you know, is, is, it's a gray line. The blue line is our M&amp;O taxes, and the, and the orange line is the INS taxes, interest and sinking. The yellow line is our price values. So you can see the increase in the price values from 18, 19, all the way to 23, 24, it's gone up. It's gone up, you know, about $200 million in our school district. At the same time, our tax rate has come down. The total tax rate, you can see the gray line from 129.9 in 2018-19 to the, to the proposed 0.9583 that we're gonna be this year. And that's, you know, due to the state compression that they have, the maximum compress rate that we can tax. So like, you know, saying before, you know, yeah, we reduce our tax rate, but the state subsidizes any lost, lost property tax revenue. But this, it does show, you know, the gradual decrease of our tax rate over, over the years. Any questions on that particular?
Any questions, sir, Mr. Cabasos?
Yeah, there's a couple more.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna tell you to sit down, sir.
Not yet.
Oh, it's right there. How long I see it? Sorry, sir.
So we also discussed our SRT funds, you know, that we have for 23-24. And this is what we're carrying over from 22-23, we're gonna carry about $2.9 million. We have the amount of penny commitments of about $82,000. So the, the net amount that we're carrying over is $2.1 million. We have some positions that are funded through SRT, $800,000 in retention stipends that we're gonna be paying this year, about a million dollars, and, and an invoice that we need to pay, you know, for some wiring systems that we did. So the total is about $2.1 million, so available SRT funds, about $2,341. So we pretty much, pretty much are gonna fully use all of our SRT funds. We have already used all the SRT2 funds, SRT3 funds, we're gonna finish them this year.
We need to spend it by next September, right?
We need to spend it by September 2025.
Oh.
Or 24, maybe 2024. Okay, so the, besides the property insurance that we reviewed on the Finance Committee, we've also reviewed the teacher pay scale. So, you know, we, you know, you know, as new teachers get hired, we're using the 23-24 teacher hiring schedule to place them. Since we did not adjust our teacher pay scale from 22-23, our existing teachers, you know, would need to get a step increase to keep pace with the new teachers with, you know, with their salaries. If we don't do this, you know, some, some of the existing teachers will get paid less than the new teachers with the same years of experience. And that's because, you know, that, you know, as, as teachers come in, we place them based on the total years of experience that they have. So let's say they have eight years, you know, they're gonna be placed, they're gonna be placed at, you know, $52,335. You know, our teacher from last year, from seven years, you know, you know, if we don't make that adjustment, there's, they would be at $51,285, even though they have eight years of experience. So, so we will need to make some adjustments just to keep our existing teachers in pace with the new teachers that we do hire. There is an agenda item that we have, you know, for the board to approve later on. If you'd like to answer any questions that the board members might have.
Will this include all teachers?
Yes.
Everybody would be brought up to the new pay scale now?
Everybody would, would, would be able to, you know, to get paid at least the same as the new teachers.
Right.
So all the teachers.
So those that have been here, let's just say 15 years, will be brought up to the new 15-year?
Yeah, that's correct.
Awesome.
Yes. So it's an overall impact to the budget is about $86,000. There's not a significant impact, but I think it's something that is, you know, needed for the existing teachers.
Yes, sir.
And one, one thing that, you know, came up in the meeting is that we usually didn't have to look at this too much, because there were raises every year. And, you know, it's been quite a few years since we didn't, I can put a raise, so that's where, you know, when you got a raise, it kinda did help out with that step. But since there wasn't one this year, that's where that step is important.
Yeah, and to say, you know, you're right, I have to go, as is correct, pretty much every year, the district has given an increase. And this happens, you know, this happened, you know, I've seen it happen before, that there needs to be an adjustment just to make sure that we keep pace with our existing teachers, and they get paid the same amount as the new teachers. So, so the difference between the step is not significant. I mean, there's one step that is about a 1,100, but everybody else is between 200, 300, 400, and just a, just a step increase. So not a significant amount.
That's good. I've been asking about this for like the last, I don't know how long, and all of a sudden, just, it happened. Why couldn't we have done it three years ago, four years ago, you know? So, no, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are five items on the consent agenda. The Annual 23-24 Texas Teacher Evaluation System, ETS, calendar appraisal measures, the July 2023 monthly tax report, the annual review investment policy, the management of understanding with the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, JJAEP, for the 23-24 school year, and an academic agreement between Texas Opera College and Southern Fair Independence School District. Do you have a motion to approve of item, item under consent agenda? So I have a motion by Ms. Cabasos. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Montalvo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The first item to consider and possible action is Discussion and Consideration to Adjust the Teacher Pay to Conform with the 23-24 Teacher Salary Schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, board members, and Ms. Torres. Agenda 7, we have Discussion and Consideration to Adjust Teachers' Pay to Conform to the, with the 23-23, 2024 Teacher Salary Schedule. We did this, did discuss this at the Finance Committee last week, and also, you know, a little bit summary earlier, earlier tonight. This comes at a cost of $86,815 that will align all teachers to the 23-24 salary schedule, and we do recommend approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve to adjust teachers' pay to conform with the 2023-2024 teachers' salary schedule.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Johnson, second by Ms. Montalvo, to adjust the teacher pay to conform with the 23-24 teachers' salary schedule. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment, that although I'm very happy, you know, that we are going to compensate teachers appropriately, I, I really would ask our superintendent to find money somewhere for everybody else, because I think that the cost of living has gone up tremendously. And although the teachers are the main players, I mean, if it wasn't for our support staff that we have, our buses, I mean, bus drivers, maintenance, everybody, you know, everybody's very crucial in the success of this school district. So I'd just like that to be noted.
I'm sorry, noted, it's been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is Purchase Orders Over $25,000. First item is Discussion and Consideration to Purchase Two 12-Foot Stainless Steel Exhaust Systems for the CTE Program.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, board members, and Ms. Torres. Agenda 7, we have Discussion and Consideration to Purchase Two Stainless Steel Exhaust Systems that is gonna be funded through the K program. We are recommending to purchase these two 12-foot stainless steel exhaust system from Industrial Fire Safety at a cost of $46,800. And again, we're gonna be using current technology, but if you'd like to answer any questions, that would matter.
Madam President, I move that we purchase two 12-foot stainless steel exhaust systems for CTE program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Johnson, and a second by Ms. Montalvo. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next item is Discussion and Possible Action to Consider and Approve the Superintendent's Recommendation Regarding the Designation of Ten Non-Business Public Information Act Days for Public Information Act Requests Received Beginning September 1, 2023, and Continue Throughout the 23-24 School Year.
Good evening, Board President, and Board Members. And Mrs. Torres, Superintendent Hasmwood, 3033, was updated to define as what is not a business day, considered as a business day, such as a holiday, and what is non-business. A business, a non-business day may be designated by the school board where administrative offices are closed or operating with a minimum staffing. The governmental body may designate no more than ten non-business days each calendar year. As you can see on the screen, from September to December 2023, administration- administration has chosen these days when we're off. And then also for calendar twenty-four school week, January through December twenty-twenty-four, an additional ten days for non-business days.
Besides these days, the eleven federal holidays also count as non-business days. It used to be that if the school was shut, that was a non-business day, but that's not the case after this House Bill, thirty, thirty-three, was set. So we have to designate certain days, and then we will post those so that the public knows when we have non-business days.
Any questions, Mr. Casas?
Madam President, I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding the designation of ten non-business public information act days for public information act requests received beginning September first, twenty-twenty-three, and continuing throughout the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four calendar year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Johnson, and second by Ms. Montalvo, to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding the designation of ten non-business public information act days for public information act requests received beginning September first, twenty-twenty-three, and continuing throughout the twenty-three and twenty-four school year, calendar year. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next is resolution to approve the good cause exception to provide armed security officers at each individual campus.
Yes, once again, in your package, you'll have a copy of the resolution. And Texas Education Code thirty-seven point zero eight one four requires an armed security officer at each campus during regular school hours. And each armed security officer must be a school district peace officer, school resource officer, or commissioned peace officer employed as a security. However, the Texas Education Code does provide a good cause exemption for districts that are not able to provide a commissioned officer at every campus during regular school hours due to the availability of funding or lack of qualified commissioned peace officers. So we did have alternative standard as outlined by the Texas Education Code for the safety and security of students, and set up by contracting with the City of LaFayette Police Department for the provision of multiple school resource officers to cover LaFayette ISD campuses on a rotating patrol.
Questions, Mr. Casas?
Madam President, I move to approve the resolution to approve good cause exception to providing armed security officers at each individual campus.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Mrs. Johnson, and seconded by Mr. Samdano, to approve the resolution to approve good cause exception to providing armed security officers at each individual campus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is now six thirty-four P M. And we are moving into closed meeting, person to Texas Government Code, chapter five, five. It is now seven oh four P M. We are now reconvened to open session. Let the record show that the superintendent accepted the following resignations as presented by the administration in closed session. Clarissa Rodriguez Fugarte. Also let the record show that the superintendent approved the one-year probationary contract to the following. Justo Torres Rojas, one-year probationary contract. Are there any motions?
Yes, Madam President. I move that we offer contracts to probationary contracts as discussed in closed session for the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four school year to the following. Renee Chirinos, pending completion of required documentation, Twenty-First Century Grant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Johnson, and the second by Ms. Montalvo.
I want something.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Are there any other motions?
Yes, Madam President. I move to find that there is no good cause for the resignation of teacher Y C and authorize the superintendent to report the board's findings and file all required documents and reports with the State Board of Educator Certification.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Johnson, and a second by Ms. Montalvo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any district announcements?
Yes, tomorrow, we have Meet the Teacher at WB Green Junior High at five thirty P M. Also, on the seventeenth, we have Meet the Teacher Night at Omea Lomigas. And on the twenty-second of August, we'll have the Meet the Teacher Night at Althoria Early College High School. And then our next regular board meeting will be the eleventh of September.
Any questions? If there is no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Ms. Montalvo, and a second by Mr. Samdano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. It is now seven oh seven P M, and this meeting is adjourned.